Good afternoon. I will call to order the October 17th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Sweezy, Lippke-Pier, Vreeland, and Rockwell. This time I'll ask that you silence any mobile devices. Actually Commissioner Kronzer is just walking in as well. I ask that you silence any mobile devices at this time, and we can get started with the meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the October 5th meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, and that motion carries. Our next item of business is to approve the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be discussed and which will be considered on consent. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item one is the Legacy at 1220 South First Street and 121 12th Avenue South. That is a final plat. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item one on consent. Item two is a vacation in the vicinity, in the 1900 block of Lindale Avenue South. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item two on consent. Item three is the Church of St. Joan of Arc addition at 4537 Third Avenue South. Two variances and a site plan review for a building addition there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item four is at 2124 Marshall Street Northeast. That's a conditional use permit for a dock. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item four on consent. Item five is the Lofts on East Lake at 1405 East Lake Street. That's a site plan review for a mixed-use addition there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? Seeing no one, we'll put item five on consent. Item six is Carmel West at 312 West Lake Street. Two variances and a site plan review for a building addition there. We'll discuss item six. Item seven is Rana Village at 312 West Lake Street and 2900 Pleasant Avenue. Several applications for a new residential building there. We will discuss item seven. Item eight is the Theater Garage Marquee Apartments at 2004, 2008, 2012, 2014, and 2018 Lindale Avenue South. Several applications for a new mixed-use building there. We will discuss item eight. And finally, item nine is a zoning code text amendment and map amendment related to floodplain regulations. We'll discuss item nine. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, two, three, four, and five will be on consent, and we will discuss items six, seven, eight, and nine. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, and that motion carries. We do not have a committee of the whole consent agenda to consider today, so we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That is items one, two, three, four, and five. Is anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? Again, that's one, two, three, four, and five. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on the consent agenda, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, and that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion, and we'll start with item six, Carmel West at 312 West Lake Street. Staff is Mr. Hanauer. And Commissioner Kronzer, I understand you had a question about that. Maybe you could ask that, and Mr. Hanauer can focus his presentation on that.
Certainly. My question was in regards to what the proposed exterior lighting for the project is, particularly along Grand Avenue.
Commissioner Kronzer, thanks for bringing that up, and there wasn't details on the proposed exterior lighting that would go beyond what's there today. So, in talking with the applicant this afternoon, they are proposing and willing to entertain, to implement lighting that the Commission would like to see, including the possibility of having shielded light packs along Grand Avenue that would help bring more light to the area. And they do realize that their light might be deficient along Grand Avenue. So, you can, the applicants here, and happy to have them provide a few more details on that lighting.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff beyond the question about, if there are none at this time, Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we've been through this in the past, but I do get a lot of questions from constituents whenever there's an application here to talk about enforcement of, you know, our previous regulations, including related to window sightlines and I think other issues. Could you speak to that question and how that can be considered as part of this land use application?
Commissioner Bender, so the enforcement, there is an enforcement issue along the building for, along Lake Street. Is that the part that you're talking about, or along Grand Avenue?
The comment that I have is not specific enough for me to ask you a specific question, but I will say that in the past, and I have one specific email, that's just sort of a general question about can we consider issues of enforcement when we're looking at a land use application like this?
Sure, sure. Yes, I definitely see that playing into this role, but then we did think about that and looked at the previous proposals. They did remove that addition that was, that was built out of compliance with the site plan, and I've highlighted in this picture here, the area where that new addition would be going along Lake Street, and I have the plans in there, but we did, we were mindful of that and saw what they're proposing to do along with the conditions of approval, improving the building to, to a condition that will be a benefit to the area.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first and possibly address that question related to lighting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Scott Nelson with DJR Architecture. And before I answer some questions specific, I'd like to officially thank Aaron Hanauer for his help on both of these applications. There are a couple of very complicated, very interrelated applications that we've been working on for better than six months, and it's with close cooperation with Aaron. I think we've managed to improve both projects and do something that I think will be a real plus to the neighborhood. Aaron explained to me the questions brought up about lighting shortly before noon today, and we generally address these with our, kind of our final PDR, working close with the staff after we've gotten an electrical contractor involved and understand that we have to meet all the city regulations. In this case, we're all for increasing the lighting along Grand Avenue. I think the more the merrier, and we weren't quite understanding the notion of the requirements for light that's allowed on the property line, and I think we can actually allow a little bit more. So, we're thinking about doing cutoff wall packs along the wall on the existing Carmel West building. They will light up the sidewalk from Lake Street, or from the furniture building all the way back to where that building ends, and then also putting up where the Rana Village project is, that has little yards in front of the walk-up townhouses, actually doing individual pole-mounted fixtures there that will actually light up their yards as well as the sidewalk in addition to that. All of the units have wall packs on their front doors. We'll have significantly more lighting ones there right now.
Commissioner Kronzer?
On the Carmel West building, what spacing are you thinking about? What spacing for the light fixtures?
On the fronts of the buildings?
On the Carmel West building along Grand?
The spacing, I'm going to guess there'll be roughly 30 feet.
Okay.
Because that's about the spacing of the sidewalks. We put one on every sidewalk. It'll be, oh, probably a little over, little over 30 feet apart.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? Hearing none. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item six? Mr. Hanauer?
I made two typos in the staff report, actually, in the recommendations. Going to the variance applications, I called out in B and C, the, let me see here. So, there we go. So, for the variance applications on A and B, I called out Pleasant Avenue. Carmel West does not front Pleasant Avenue. It should have been Grand Avenue for both, and if you or another Commissioner wouldn't mind possibly making a motion to make, switch those names, that would be appreciated.
Yes, we can make that correction. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item six? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on item six, and Commissioners, Commissioner Kronzer?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation for variance A, reduce the front yard setback with the edit of changing Pleasant Avenue to Grand Avenue, and it is Grand Avenue South.
We have a motion and a second to approve variance A with a correction to the street name and the language provided on the agenda from Pleasant to Grand Avenue. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
So, that's eight zero.
And that motion carries, Commissioner Kronzer? Would you like to?
Yes. I propose a motion to approve staff recommendations for variance B to reduce the northern interior side yard setback with the same edit to recognize Grand Avenue South as the location with the one condition.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve variance B with the same correction to the street name and the one stated condition. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer?
Eighth? Give me a second. I'll read the proposed eighth condition, and it's just to summarize what the applicant was just discussing about lighting. Eighth condition proposed is to work with staff to install building-mounted light fixtures that are full cutoff at the pedestrian scale spaced approximately 30 to 40 feet apart and controlled by a photo cell.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item C, the site plan review with the seven stated conditions as well as an eighth condition related to building mounted.
Mr. President, we were just discussing, it appears in the staff report there are eight conditions prior to my addition. Is there in fact seven or eight staff recommended?
Okay, so the numbering was off, so, so there are, okay, so there are seven stated conditions. We are adding an eight.
Correct.
Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. And that concludes our discussion on item six. Our next item for discussion is item seven, which is Rana Village at 312 West Lake Street and 2900 Pleasant Avenue. And Commissioner Kronzer, I understand you had a question about this one. Yeah. So, similar question, Mr. Hanauer.
I think, and that was, that's touched on by, by the applicant about their proposals of having additional lighting, which wasn't shown on the Grand Avenue side of the building, that being this image here. The applicant did talk about having cutoff wall packs for the walk-up units along Grand Avenue, but then now looking to propose and install some light posts for each of those walk-up units and have a better site plan. So, I believe their intentions are to have small light posts that would be in line with each of these walk-up units along Grand Avenue to help out with lighting. And just, I'm not sure if this was, was something else that, in terms of the lighting for the promenade that's proposed on the north end of the site, they are having, they're proposing eight light posts 12 feet in height to help out with the lighting of that pedestrian walkway along the greenway. And...
All right. Are there any further questions of staff on item seven?
But I do, with my problem with numbers, I did, with the, with the application J, the site plan review, I requested that you look at the, when things need to be completed by. It is November 18th, but looking at 2018 instead of 2016.
All right. We will make that correction in our motion. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for item seven. Commissioner Kronzer, did you have any further questions of the applicant on this one? Maybe we can ask the applicant to speak and just address that issue very briefly.
Again, Members of the Planning Commission, I was actually confused in addressing both issues last time, but, and just to clarify with what Aaron said, we're keeping the wall packs at every one of the townhome walk-up units. In addition, we'll be putting light poles in front at each sidewalk, so you get some light at the front yard as well as along the sidewalk. So, we're, the more the merrier lighting in front of these units.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we can move on to some other speakers. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item seven? If there is no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we have several applications in front of us. Commissioner Kronzer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I will move staff recommendations for the rezoning of the stated addresses.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item A, the rezoning. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note a couple of things about this project. One is that it's one of many housing projects that have been built along the Midtown Greenway, and this one comes with the support of the Midtown Greenway Coalition, which has been very active in ensuring that building step back from the greenway. So, I wanted to note that. And also that this promenade that is slowly being built along the Midtown Greenway is also included in this project, and that's really important to folks in the community. And I think it's really great to see that each of the, that we've been able to work with staff and the community and each of these project teams so far to build that continuous promenade along the greenway, fulfilling the long-desired vision of having a more pedestrian-oriented pathway to create more activation along the greenway.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries, and perhaps we can take on a few more of those.
Permit to increase the maximum permitted building height and the commercial use permit to allow for enclosed parking.
All right. Is there a second?
Item B and C on the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion to approve items B and C? Hearing, hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to continue?
To approve the six stated variances, items D, E, F, G, H, and I.
We have a motion to approve items D, E, F, G, H, and I. Is, is there, that's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Can I just clarify that E is being returned and you're saying approved?
Yes, I would modify my motion to exclude item E. The variance has been returned to the applicant.
All right. So, that modification is noted. I think we can call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries.
Motion to approve site plan review with the six stated conditions with the addition of a seventh, but first editing the date and, the first condition to November 18th, 2018, and the seventh condition, very similar to the last application, work with staff to install building-mounted and post-mounted light fixtures that are full cutoff at the pedestrian scale and spaced approximately 30 to 40 feet apart and controlled by the photo cell, and to install light fixtures along the promenade as shown on the plans.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item J, the site plan review with a correction to the first condition, replacing 2016 with 2018, also adding a seventh condition related to building and postponed light fixtures. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. And finally, Commissioner Kronzer, we have item K.
Propose a motion to approve item K, the minor subdivision, to add a portion of the property at 30, sorry, 312 West Lake Street to the property at 2900 Pleasant Avenue.
We have a motion and a second to approve item K, the minor subdivision. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lippke-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Swayze?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item seven. Our next item for discussion is item eight, the Theater Garage Marquee Apartments. Staff is Ms. Steiner.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you are several applications for a new mixed-use building at 2004 through 2018 Lindale Avenue South. Background on the property, the subject property actually includes five different parcels at the intersection of Franklin and Lindale. The overall lot area is just under an acre. It's located in Ward 10, Lowry Hill East neighborhood. It's designated future land use as mixed-use. Lindale Avenue is a commercial corridor in our comp plan, and Franklin Avenue is a community corridor. It also falls, the property also falls within the boundaries of the Lynn Lake Small Area Plan. The applicant's proposal is a six-story, 113-unit building with a little over 8,000 square feet of commercial space incorporated. There's 143 parking spaces underground, both underground and two levels above grade, and then there's also six additional spaces that are in garages on the at-grade portion. So, here's just the site plan. So, the site would be accessed by two curb cuts. There would be large restaurant space at the corner of Franklin and Lindale. There would be eight walk-up units along, residential walk-up units along Lindale. An additional level of parking would be accessed from Franklin, which would be at the mezzanine level, and then the residential parking would be underground. There's a small retail space between the residential and the restaurant space in the residential lobby on Lindale as well. The land use applications that are required for this project include a rezoning. Four of those five property parcels that I mentioned are Zoned C1, so to rezone those parcels from C1 to C2, the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height of a building, three variances of, one of floor area ratio, and then two of setbacks, and then site plan review for the building. So, going through each application, just briefly summarizing the analysis in the staff report. So, the rezoning is for the four southerly parcels of the overall project. As I mentioned, the future land use is mixed-use. We have a provision in the zoning code that prohibits split zoning, and so the combining of the parcels has to be consistent into one zoning district. So, it would have to all be rezoned, either C1 or C2, or a different zoning district. There's nearby C2 zoning, and then we, so we are recommending approval of that rezoning to C2. Also, the Lynn Lake Small Area Plan also designates this property as mixed-use and notes that this intersection is a gateway to southwest Minneapolis. And so, the C2 would support a diversity, more diverse uses and additional height on this corridor. The conditional use permit to increase maximum height is from four stories or 56 feet to six stories or 69 feet. Again, the property designated mixed-use is at the intersection of a commercial corridor and a community corridor. The majority of the building would be only 63 and a half feet tall, and also the majority of the building would be setback 55 feet from residential uses. And the parking garage that's closest to the nearest residential uses would only be about 15 feet tall as perceived from that neighbor, which provides a transition to the higher, higher height. There is a significant grade change, which you can tell in this diagram at this intersection, so the actual elevation of the top of this building would not be taller than the building that's actually on Bryant nearby. In the application, the applicant submitted a shadow study. There's minimal shadowing impact, though there is shadowing in the early mornings of the properties to the northwest, but that shadowing decreases or is eliminated by noon. The scale and character of the surrounding area is about one to four-story buildings. The nearby zoning is R6, C2, or R2. Those have by right height of either four or six stories. So, we are recommending approval of that conditional use permit to increase the maximum height of the building. Next, the variance in maximum floor area ratio. The request is from 2.38 to 3.0. Again, the property is located on the intersection of a community corridor and a commercial corridor where high-density residential development and mixed-use development is encouraged by our plans and policies. The bulk of the building has been designed to be concentrated along those corridors and then stepped down towards the nearest residential uses. And like I mentioned, for the conditional use permit, the significant grade changes on the site impact the perceived height and bulk of the building. So, staff found that the impact of the bulk has been adequately mitigated and that the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality or be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the vicinity, and the variance would also not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the general public or those utilizing the property. The rear yard variance, so I've diagrammed out the variance request. So, the rear yard is the western yard, which abuts residential uses. Typically, properties that are zoned commercially do not have yard requirements. However, when a commercially zoned property is directly abuts a residential use, there's a five-plus-two-X setback. So, for the six-story building, there would be a 15-foot setback required. The applicant is proposing a three-foot setback for the building. It actually varies from 3.2 to 3.9 along the property. Staff found that practical difficulties do exist due to difficulties accommodating the parking in the building, which meets our zoning code's dimensional standards on the narrow lot, while also providing active uses along both streets, as well as the soil conditions which limit the amount of underground parking that is feasible on the site. Staff found that the proposal balances city policies that support increased commercial activity in this area and residential density with the need to provide off-street parking and the access to that parking. Also, the building steps back at the third level. As you can see in the bottom, so the diagram on the top is the first-floor site plan, and then the diagram on the bottom is the fourth floor. So you can see that the majority of the building is stepped back over 55 feet from that western property line, and only 30 feet of the building is actually at that three feet for the full six stories of the building. So we are recommending approval, but with one condition, which is also related to a site plan review standard, that the western wall elevation of the parking garage be adequately screened as shown in the application. For the cider and variance on the south, that abuts a commercial use where there would typically not be a yard requirement. However, because the proposal incorporates residential windows, they have a 15-foot yard requirement. The applicant is putting the nearest windows three feet from the property line. So the setback issue is really just for the windows, not for the building or the parking garage on the first two floors. If those windows were eliminated, the building could be built up to their property line. However, the building to the south has access to several, or a few of the spaces along their southern, or their northern property line, so the applicant is choosing to build the building three feet from that property line. If windows were eliminated and the wall was entirely blank, that would be inconsistent with city policies. And then that adjacent building that I mentioned doesn't have any windows, that would be impacted by the residential building being three feet instead of 15 feet away. So staff is recommending approval of that south yard variance. And then moving on to site plan review, I'm not going to go through all the standards. I'll just note what we've recommended granting alternative compliance for. And then I'll give a little more detail about the visual interest because that plays into the condition of approval. So we recommend granting alternative compliance for building placement along Lyndale. The building elevation fluctuates between four and 12 feet. Staff thought that because of the overall length of the building, this was helpful to breaking up the facade. Visual interest, I'll talk about later. Windows, they were just slightly deficient on the residential portion. However, if you were to incorporate the glass doors in the residential on Lyndale, they would meet. So we are recommending granting alternative compliance. And then for canopy trees, they have a two-canopy tree requirement. They aren't incorporating any on their site, but they are incorporating three canopy trees in the public right-of-way. And additional shrubbery in addition are exceeding their requirement. So staff was recommending granting alternative compliance for that. So to talk more about the visual interest, so along that west elevation, and you all saw this incumbent hole as well, there is a blank wall well over 25 feet in length. The applicant is proposing to install these metal mesh features, which would have vines growing up over them, and then also plant shrubbery in between those vine mesh treatments in order to screen the property throughout the year, or screen the parking garage from the adjacent residential uses throughout the year. So staff is just recommending a condition of approval, ensuring that this is incorporated in final plans as it helps to mitigate that blank wall. So, and then you should have several public comments that have been received in your packets. And hopefully, so there are some to speak tonight as well, with concerns about the height and the various other features of the proposal. Staff is recommending approval of all of the applications with the conditions of approval listed in your reports. I can stop there and take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? If there are none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Please state your name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Leibard with Master Properties at 201 West Broadway Avenue. And I just want to say that we previously submitted an application for the site in 2014 with a little bit of a different design. And we withdrew our application due to some land title issues. Since then, we've resolved the land title issues and also took the past two years to look at some redesigning of some of the aspects of the building based on the comments and concerns that we got through our last application process. With our redesigned building, we presented at the Lowry Hill East Neighborhood Association. There's zoning and planning meeting in August of this year, and we received positive feedback about the changes that we made. And I just wanted to bring up, I know Lisa mentioned some of the questions in the comment packet were about the mechanical system with the garage. When we applied for our land use, we didn't have that placed yet, but I've been working with our mechanical engineer and our general contractor. And I believe that we are looking at placing the exhaust of the garage ventilation to face north out onto Franklin Avenue.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kronzer?
I just have a couple clarifying questions. So the space along Franklin between this proposed building and the building to the west, is that going to be sealed off with a fence of some sort, or what's the condition walking along the sidewalk on Franklin going west?
Just west of the garage entrance?
Yeah.
That will be open, I believe, we're just under four feet off the property line. And then there's some, a setback, I'm not sure what it is, to the property to the west, and then there's small one-story commercial building.
So it's very similar what happens today?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. And is the proposed building requiring pile driving for the foundation?
They will be using geopiers.
Geopiers, okay, so geopiers are packed, rammed earth into the ground?
I'm not sure. Don, do you know?
So there's no actual pile driving going on, just compaction of aggregate? Okay, thank you. Let's see. All right. Oh, I want to ask your question since it is the topic of the day. Can you describe the lighting you're proposing along Franklin and Lyndale? We talked about that cow when I was satisfied, so I just want to make sure the plan is still the same.
So along Lyndale Avenue and Franklin Avenue?
Yep.
So besides the public lighting, we are planning on some under-sophia lighting along the, you know, at the restaurant on Franklin. So it'll be incorporated into the building. And then on Lyndale, where we have the residences, we'd have some sconces.
Okay, you said public lighting. Is the proposal to add pedestrian-scale lights along Franklin or Lyndale? You're referring to the existing street lighting?
Additional street lighting?
Is the project proposing additional street lighting?
Sorry.
It doesn't appear that way in the drawings.
Yeah, we're, I don't know that we're proposing additional street lighting.
Not? No?
No.
And if we could, first of all, we should have everyone state their name and address for the record, and we should make sure, just so it's picked up on the recording, that we're at the microphone. So if you don't mind stating your name and address.
I'm Annie Ryan with Clash Architects.
Okay, so has that lighting shown up on the plans that we have? I saw a few references to sconce lighting.
Yeah.
It is, okay.
The sconces are on the elevations, but...
Okay. So just to clarify, is there any additional lighting being installed in the public right-of-way with this project? Either additional overhead street lighting or acorn lighting per Minneapolis standards?
Yeah. So part of our proposal involves removing an existing taper of the curb at the intersection, so we'd be widening the sidewalk there to about 20 feet. And in that widened sidewalk, kind of see on the site plan a little bit that we're proposing mostly along the intersection from the commercial portion is going to be left as a majority of sidewalk. And then as you move in front of the residential walk-up units, there is space that we are proposing a boulevard for to plant trees and other landscaping and also lighting and benches.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Commissioner Slack?
I have a landscaping question. The six lilac trees that are shown essentially at the intersection at the corner, the perspective images show, or previously it's shown raised planters, and then those trees in the raised planters. I think based on the site plan now, they're not raised planters being proposed, correct?
That's correct.
I have, I think I have some concerns, and I could also look to some of my other commissioners. I guess I'd prefer to see street trees rather than lilac trees. If they were in raised planters and they're above the ground, that would be one way to look at it, but because they are essentially more ornamental in nature and smaller in stature, I'd prefer to see street trees in those locations rather than the lilacs.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we can move on to some other speakers. And just so I have a sense, how many of you would like to speak on this? So at least a couple of you. All right, so you can decide who goes first, and please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Terry Burks, and I live at 2115 Aldrich Avenue South. And I'm also here speaking on behalf of Pearl Baker, who lives at 2019 Aldrich Avenue South, directly behind this project. She's elderly and could not make it here today. And she's also a little bit difficulties with the electronics, so she didn't get a letter to the packet either. But she is directly impacted by the project. She has, this is what she wrote. She opposes the plan for two main reasons, that six stories are too high and do not follow the neighborhood guidelines. I will lose significant light on my property. This building is so large and so close to my property that it will create significant shadows. The western setback is too close as proposed. This is again where it was going from 15 feet to three. And behind her is a parking lot, because it's not all enclosed for the entire project. There are sections of it that are open and exposed. It will put my property at risk in case of fire, and it creates an unsafe dark space for vagrant activities. So she is concerned about that three feet of space is not really manageable space, and that's a long tract of space between the residential properties behind there on the western side of the project. I live at 2115 Aldrich Avenue South, a little bit further south of the project, but also in the same block. And I also feel that the six stories would look out of place. We have a community area plan, I believe that's the right term, that the neighborhood has approved and even discussed with Councilman and Bender at a recent meeting about the citizen overlay project or the street overlay project, anyway, about the city following more of the neighborhood plans as they've been developed. And this still is in conflict with that. And so our neighborhood is impacted greatly by increasing from four stories to six. And again, I do think there's a safety and security issue on the 15-foot setback being changed to three feet, four, or however, it goes through 3.2 to 3.9 as it was presented. We do not have alleyways between our, behind our houses, the way other blocks in our community are, so that that variance is, has a big impact to us. So we really request that the city consider following the plan, the community area plan as it was designed, with modest variances. I get that the project needs to have variances in order to be cohesive, and that makes some sense, but not six stories. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address.
Hey, guys. My name is Kathleen Hokinson. I live at 604 Ridgewood Avenue. We are, my husband Eric and I have been in the neighborhood for 30 years. We own 604 and 606 Ridgewood Avenue, which is very similar, but just catty-corner from what she talked about. This is just right on the intersection, right past Rudolph's, right behind Rudolph's, the street that goes out. We love Don. We love what he's doing. We love everything he's talking about, but my husband urged me to come here and say, "We don't like the fact that you want to build it bigger than the code. Go ahead and build a corner. Go ahead and do that, but if you know the area, we can't afford any more people." If you're in the afternoon, Don doesn't live there, we do. But if you have to walk down to the wedge to go get groceries, you have to walk because you can't get in your car to get there. It'll take you a half an hour to get two blocks. So to add more people to that congested corner is an issue. The height is an issue. We're on the hill. We look out over that. It's a problem. We're not, we're not the greenway, we're the gateway. We're the beginning, the transition into a really cool neighborhood that provides beautiful old houses alongside with some really cool, innovative property. But this isn't the time for a six-story facility right there, but we love what Don's doing. We're his biggest fans. But not today, not in this neighborhood, because it is a very localized neighborhood. We all walk. There's runners. We don't need more cars trying to get into that congested corner. And just think about what's going to happen to Super America. You can't get in there now. It's a problem. You can't actually, you can't even move from, I would say, 28th going north on Lyndale Avenue just to get to the highway, which is my backyard. You can't get there. It takes you 25 minutes. So to add more congestion, more people on that corner, may not be the right time today. Pick a different corner. Come in and gradually come into a beautiful area that is not the greenway. These are beautiful homes, beautiful neighborhoods. We've all spent a lot of money and a lot of time being, making, making sure those neighborhoods, though we are east of, I would say, Kenwood, we still got a little bit of charm, and we'd like to restore that and maintain it. So just about this story, Don. Anything else, I'm cool with. We're cool with that, but we just wanted to come out and tell you. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have several applications before us, six actually. Would someone like to start us off with a motion, or are there any further questions? Commissioner Kronzer?
I will get the ball rolling here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation for the rezoning from the C1 district to the C2 district at the stated addresses.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item A, the rezoning. Are there any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Clerk please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Bignan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Squeezie?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
That is four, eight zero.
Right, and that motion carries? Mr. Kronzer, would you like to continue?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendations with the one stated condition of the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height from four stories to six stories.
I have a motion and a second to approve item B, the conditional use permit for building height. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just because a lot of the testimony was specific to the height issue, I wanted to note that I'd be happy to have staff come up and clarify that this is a conditional use permit, which means this height is allowed with conditions as long as the applicant has met those conditions, which is different than a variance. And I know that that gets confusing, these different legal applications, but generally speaking, this height is allowed here as long as the applicant has met the conditions in the conditional use permit. And I also just wanted to clarify this question about, is there a plan that says we only want four-story buildings versus six-story buildings in this area, because I actually don't think it's covered. There's a Lynn Lake Small Area Plan and a Uptown Small Area Plan, both of which... a Lynn Lake Small Area Plan and a Uptown Small Area Plan, both of which give general guidance for this area. But I, I don't believe that either of those plans has a specific height to this, to this site. But I wanted to clarify that with staff.
Correct. Uh, the conditional use permit to increase maximum height, um, the height is permitted provided that they meet the conditions and the findings of the conditional use permit, um, which the analysis of that is, uh, within the staff report. And staff did find that, uh, the proposed height met all of those findings. Um, secondly, the small area plan, the Lynn Lake Small Area Plan does not specify, um, that the maximum height here is four stories. Uh, the maximum height for the zoning code is four stories. That's why the conditional use permit to increase maximum height is required. Um, I, I do believe that I saw in one of the public comment, uh, letters that perhaps the Larry Hill, Hill Use Neighborhood Association hasn't, adopted recommendations that, um, the properties in this area would be four stories, but that's not a city council adopted plan.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. And, uh, is there any further discussion on the motion to approve item B? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Dagnan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to continue?
Who, uh, approve staff recommendations for the increase in the floor area ratio from 2.38 to 3.0?
We have a motion and a second to approve item C, the variance for floor area ratio. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Dagnan?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer?
Yes. Um, I'd like to propose a motion to approve staff recommendations for both variances, uh, items D and E, uh, with the one stated condition for D, these are both yard setback requirements.
Second, right, we have a motion and a second to approve variances D and E. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President. The other kind of, uh, I think unresolved question that I've heard tonight and also in an email from constituents was about this, um, the issue of the garage enclosure and where that landed. And I wondered if staff or the applicant could talk through, um, the ventilation and is it opened or closed? And then how that back wall was treated? Because I know there were several different iterations of that over the couple of years now that this project has been in development. Just so we're all very clear about that final. It's in the packet, but.
Elizabeth Leibert again. And, uh, to talk about the parking garage, it is fully enclosed. Um, the, the proposed ventilation system that we've been working on with our mechanical engineers would be to have the intake on the lid of the parking structure on this, would be the second level. And that would be vertically and that would carry down through all levels of the parking garage. And the exhaust, um, of the parking garage would exit north onto Franklin Avenue. Um, but it, it is fully enclosed, um, with the exception there's no door on the entrance off of Franklin or Lindale Avenue.
Right. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve variances D and E? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Dagnan?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. Finally, Commissioner Kronzer, we have item F, the site plan review.
And review as, as reviewed by staff with the six stated conditions.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve item F, the site plan review. Commissioner Kronzer?
Yeah, I have a commission, a question for Commissioner Slack. Uh, could you restate your question and concern about the street trees?
It was, it was a sort of a question and a comment. Um, I think throughout this, this planning process, we've, we've seen images of, of, um, the landscape treatments at that corner. And I think even the image in this package still shows, uh, raised planters, um, which, you know, I think with, with the type of plant material that's in them, getting the trees up, out, out of the ground and elevated, kind of helps to kind of reinforce that gateway experience. Uh, without the raised planters, it brings those smaller, shorter statured trees closer to the ground plane, which, you know, initially you're going to have a lot of issues with, uh, the heights of the branches and they're going to have to be high pruned. And I, I think they're going to just have a tougher time in, in that urban environment. And so, uh, I would prefer to see street trees, real street trees, rather than, uh, the trees that are proposed there, uh, in those six locations at the corner. So, sorry, that wasn't, that wasn't a question. It was more just the response.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to work with, uh, staff and our civil engineer and landscape architect to, to refine that and, and look at getting the street trees in there. Thank you.
I think the applicant does a good job with soil volume, at least what I can see in the plan. So if, if we can add a seventh condition to just ensure that all the street, all trees being shown within the public realm are street trees. How would you find with that?
I could add that motion onto my, or add that condition to my motion, a, a proposed seventh condition to, um, work with staff to plant, uh, street trees and all trees within the public realm.
All right. So we, we have a motion and a second on adding that seventh, uh, condition. Commissioner Freeland?
As a representative of the park board that takes care of trees, it's really hard to replant trees. Um, and the, the addition of canopy trees is, uh, better for us, the environment, and certainly for, uh, the park board, which will now be maintaining those trees. So I appreciate the amendment.
Okay, Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last item that has come up is the, um, the roof deck. So I think we've added, this is adding a lot of people and I think it is important for folks to have space to enjoy. But there's some concern from the neighbors in the back about how that would be programmed, um, and how that would impact folks living behind. So could you speak to the programming and vision for the outdoor space that's on top of the parking garage and the west side of the building?
Yes. Um, so the proposed roof deck, uh, is going to be, uh, for the exclusive use of the residents only. I know at the neighborhood meeting that we presented, there were some concerns about whether or not there would be, um, use for the restaurant in that space and there will not be. So it, it will be only for the residents. And, um, we're looking at different landscaping options to mitigate the sound issues. And I believe, you know, we'll have residential units facing out towards the roof deck as well. And we, we'd want to make that enjoyable for them too. So, thank you.
All right. And since we do have a motion, uh, to add a seventh condition, I did want to offer the applicant an opportunity to respond. Are there any concerns with adding that condition related to trees? Or, uh, the way that's worded? Okay. Uh, just wanted to make sure we did that. Um, so why don't we have a voice vote on adding that seventh condition, uh, first? So, uh, again, that is to have the applicant work with staff to add street trees. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Uh, well, any opposed? Uh, hearing none, that motion carries. Thought, thought that sounded very unanimous. Uh, all right. So we can go back to our original motion. Uh, Commissioner Magrino?
Uh, yeah, it sounds like the applicant is amenable to this and like you're probably going to do it anyway. But I wanted to add a condition to vent the exhaust from the garage out onto the Franklin Avenue side. Sorry, I'll formally make a motion to, um, require that the garage exhaust be vented north of the site onto Franklin Avenue.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Uh, again, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to respond. Is, are you comfortable with the way that's worded or have any concern? Okay. It doesn't seem that there is any concern. So, um, is there any further discussion on that? Commissioner Kronzer?
Um, I just want to make a couple of general comments about this project. Uh, I mean, we've heard a little concern from the neighborhood about added vehicles. But I really want to call the attention of what this project is doing for the pedestrian and the pedestrian environment and the feel of the street right here. Uh, this is maybe one of the worst environments for pedestrians in the city. Uh, this project is cutting the crossing distance across Lindale. The, the corner's coming out. Uh, the sidewalks, both on Franklin and Lindale are being improved, um, with developer cost, street furniture that's, um, sometimes done by the city. Um, in, in this case, it's done by the developer. The, the height of the building itself is actually going to calm the street. Uh, there are studies showing that the taller the buildings, the more vertical elements closer to moving cars, the slower the cars go. So, uh, while yes, we might be bringing a few more cars to the site, um, I believe the end result for the neighborhood is going to be a, a better pedestrian environment and a better car environment because the cars will be going slower here. So applaud the design of this.
All right. Thank you. Uh, first, why don't we, uh, take a voice vote on adding an eighth condition, uh, related to the location of the garage exhaust? Uh, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So going back to our original motion on, uh, approval of the site plan review with now eight conditions. Is there any further discussion on that? Uh, hearing none, we have a motion to approve the site plan review, item F with eight conditions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Dagnan?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item eight. Our next item for discussion is item nine, which is a zoning code text amendment related to floodplain regulation. Staff is Mr. Verkota. And we discussed this at committee of the whole a few weeks ago. Maybe you could provide us with a quick update. Also, so I assume a few of you are interested in speaking on this item. Can I just see a show of hands? How many of you would like to speak? All right. So a, a few of you, uh, so Mr. Verkota.
Thank you, Chair. As part of a map modernization process, uh, project, FEMA has revised the flood insurance rate maps for the entire state of Minnesota. Uh, Hennepin County is actually running a little bit behind some of the other areas of the state. Uh, but the maps for Hennepin County have now been finalized and they're set to go into effect on November 4th of this year. These new maps are largely based on revised topographical data, basically having better, uh, information on where the, uh, topography lines fall. There are some areas where, uh, the base flood elevations have been, uh, changed a bit based on some, uh, changes in the field conditions. So here we have a, a map that shows basically the existing and proposed floodplain overlay. I'm going to show primarily the southern part of the city here. That's where the, the largest changes. And I will show, uh, this is what, uh, one of the new flood insurance rate map panels looks like, the blue being the, uh, actual floodplain as proposed by FEMA, excuse me, as set by FEMA. And then here is a zoom in of, uh, a portion of South Minneapolis showing, um, the areas of change, purple being areas where there's existing floodplain that's to remain, areas of red being, uh, additional, uh, area mapped newly into the floodplain. And then areas in green being areas that are currently in the floodplain that will, uh, have the floodplain designation removed. In order for the city to continue participating in the national flood insurance program, we are required to adopt these maps as well as amendments to the floodplain overlay district. So ultimately FEMA, uh, does the research. They create the maps and then come to us and say, you need to adopt these. So we don't have the ability to change boundaries for, uh, individual part properties or anything like that. They need to be adopted as presented by FEMA. And these new maps will go into effect on November 4th, whether or not they're adopted by the city. Ultimately, the difference is, uh, if the city adopts the new maps, we can continue participating in the national flood insurance program and property owners who have their dwelling in the floodplain. That's really the, the primary thing here is whether the dwelling itself is in the floodplain or not. Uh, those property owners will be able to buy a federally subsidized flood insurance. If we don't adopt the maps, uh, we will be removed from the national flood insurance program. Property owners will still be required to get flood insurance. Um, they will just need to get it through the private market, not through the subsidized program. And so, um, we have the, the revised maps as, uh, prepared by FEMA and then some amendments to the floodplain overlay district language. Uh, those revisions are being requested both by FEMA and by the DNR, uh, to basically update our requirements to be more in line with state and federal, uh, requirements. And there's not really substantial changes to, uh, how these properties are regulated or anything like that. It's really just providing some more specifics for variances and condition use permits and some things like that. Um, staff has been working with property owners that have reached out to us over the past couple of months. Um, all the property owners where there's a, a boundary change, whether it's an adder change, did receive actually two notices at public hearing due to, um, an issue with the first notice that went out. And so, uh, several people have contacted staff and, um, we've been working to get them actual determinations for their, uh, their property where, where possible. And we anticipate continuing to do that, uh, through adoption, uh, of the new, uh, maps, um, and in, into the, the coming months as lenders reach out to, uh, property owners where, um, there may be changes into the requirements. I can answer any questions you might have.
All right. Well, first, Mr. Verkota, since we do have several people here, I'm just wondering, I, I, obviously we don't have the discretion to add or remove properties from the, uh, floodplain, uh, district in, in this setting. If, if there are people who have questions or concerns about their property, what, what process should they follow?
Sure. I'm going to flip here to the map. So, obviously they're doing these, a county at a time. Um, and so, um, you know, they try, work with the best information they have, but they're not out surveying individual properties. They're going off, um, Lightar and usually using, you know, one to two foot elevation contours. And so there are certainly cases where, uh, the boundary line doesn't necessarily reflect where that actual elevation falls. And so there are, um, there are processes where a property that has been identified to be in the floodplain can get that designation removed. It's called a letter of map amendment. Um, and that's basically, um, presenting better information to FEMA, uh, specific to the property, uh, to demonstrate that, that, that floodplain elevation doesn't actually impact the principal structure. And then FEMA would issue a letter basically saying that the principal structure is, is not impacted and that insurance mandate, uh, is not there. And so that's the sort of information I've been working with property owners to get, um, using our own elevation information. And then Hennepin County is working on, uh, getting a new, uh, website online, a natural resources website that has, uh, really good elevation contours, um, far better, um, aerial photos than FEMA's using on their own maps here, uh, with the new floodplain data overlaid. And so that will be publicly available probably, uh, the first week of November, uh, for people to get good information.
Okay. So, so if anyone does have a question, they could probably contact you and you could point them in the right direction at, at the very least or have a conversation.
Absolutely. It's been, uh, about half my time over the past month and a half and, uh, I'll continue doing that. And so my contact information is in the staff report and I have a number of cards on me. So if people have specific questions, I'm more than happy to help them out with that.
Sounds good. Are there any further questions of, uh, hearing none? I'll open the public hearing for this item at this time. And, uh, if, if there's anyone who would like to speak, you can, I think we have a handful of people. Perhaps, uh, you can come to the microphone and state your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name is Peter Hanky. I live on 1100 East Minnehaha Parkway, which is directly affected by this because I'm the only house in my block that, uh, is in the floodplain. Um, and it's a significant expense. I, obviously it seems like I need to contact him to work out something because it's not something that you can really change. It was just kind of, there's a large financial impact, uh, to a lot of users where you doubled your, uh, insurance rates or triple them in the case of my, my situation, um, by being in a floodplain and I'm on the high point of the block and I'm in the floodplain. So it just, I didn't know about the process. So I'll, I'll follow that. I'll contact him later. Thanks.
Sounds good. All right. And next speaker?
Hi, my name is Dave Williams. I live on 51st Portland. So we are now in the floodplain. Uh, we have lived there for nearly 40 years. I have lived in that neighborhood all my life. We have never had a flood. Uh, FEMA has cut, come in and cut a very wide swath. I realize the city is covering its own interests by having to adopt these maps, but there has been- But there has been no recourse for the individual homeowner to come in and say, this is such overkill. And as this gentleman said, my insurance costs are going to go through the roof, whether they're federally subsidized or not. There was not going to be a wide impact, they said. 300-plus homes are being affected by this. Some new people, some elderly, some what? I don't know. But the change for these people is going to be dramatic. By the very definitions, I printed out all of your paperwork, and I won't go through it now. But by your very definitions, nothing applies to that South Minneapolis neighborhood around 51st, 52nd, Portland, Oakland. There is not one flood that has ever happened there. We are not in a flood zone. We are not in a flood area. We are not in a fringe flood area, whatever you want to call it. So I have had some experience with FEMA, with what they did out around the Lake Minnetonka area. And after a year and a half, I was able to get a variance. But it took me a year and a half in untold dollars, which we won't talk about here, to cover up something that was not necessary. So why are we putting people through this? Or is it such that we have to? And we're just sitting here flapping our jaws for no reason at all, just to vent. You know, it seems to me very unfair. And I think that they have to go through the very definitions that they put in here. And I work with water every day. I am a water systems manager for a very large wholesaler here. I deal with the acquisition of water and the drilling for it, the treatment of water, the disposal of water. And none of what they have here has anything to do with the betterment of the water resource for the city of Minneapolis or for the Mississippi River Project or whatever. It does not affect it. So their rationale from the get-go is flawed. And what do we as homeowners do to address that? It gives us no voice whatsoever. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I certainly would encourage you to contact Mr. Verkota and see if there is a possibility of starting the process of that map amendment if you do have that concern. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
I live at 5048 Logan Avenue South. My name is Janie Paulus. And my concern is that the term flood insurance is not really correct because FEMA does not cover anything in a basement but your heating, which would be your furnace, your water heater, and a washer and dryer. That is it. It does not cover any of the finished materials or your personal property. My husband and I have lived in this property for 15 years, and we've paid $36,000 in flood insurance, not our homeowner's insurance, flood insurance. And two years ago, we lost our basement to Minneha Ha Creek, going over its bounds and the water bubbling up. FEMA came out, reviewed the property, and said, you should not finish basements because it's not covered by the insurance. It has to come through the front door of the house and start building up from there in order for FEMA to cover these insurance. So my question is, these maps are created. But what we're talking about in southwest Minneapolis is not what we saw in North Carolina. We are not sitting on our rooftops. But I am paying $2,400 a year, and I got zero payment from FEMA when I lost my basement. But I can tell you that the city taxes me on that 800 square feet in the basement. My mortgage company gave me my mortgage based on that basement being finished. And if ever I go to try to resell my house, my house will be difficult to sell because I have this flood insurance that covers nothing to protect me as a homeowner, my personal properties, or the basement. So if we're going to say all these houses exist in this flood zone and FEMA is being required, then the city needs to come through and condemn all those basements and say, you cannot live in these basements. You cannot use them for living. You cannot improve them because FEMA will not cover anything on this. When I appealed to the congressman, both at the state and the federal level, their answer was, if we were going to cover what you're asking for, do you know what your FEMA rates would be? And my question to him, the staff members really, was this $36,000 that I've paid since I've lived in that home, who has that covered? Has that covered the people in Mississippi, North Carolina? It has not covered the people in southwest Minneapolis. Because when we all lost our properties, when the creek rose, and it was not the creek coming through our doors, it was hydraulic water pressure coming through and just bubbling up. A drain tile system would not control that water. It was Mother Nature out of its control. And it happens once every so many, I don't know, 50 years, whatever. But to me, it is criminal to ask us to pay this additional funds, which is now going to double, we're being told. So my husband and I will be paying about 50, or excuse me, 5,000. And you know what? We could go out on our own and buy our own furnace, our own water heater, and our own washer and dryer. We do not need this. And I know that's a federal dilemma. But when you create these maps and you say, if FEMA insurance is not there for you, you'd have to go out and buy your own flood, it doesn't really make a difference. This insurance does nothing for a homeowner.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address.
I live on 53rd Morgan, and I really spent...
If you don't mind stating your name as well, that's what's captured.
I spent over $60,000 to get my house out of the floodplain because I'm FEMA's map. My garage, or my projects no longer there, they want to charge me $4,900 a year for flood insurance. I have done everything, almost standing on my hands and everything. How can they do this to me? I, my house is out of the floodplain. I've spent $1,000 in surveys, engineers, and everything. But because where the garage is at, they want me to pay $4,900 a year of flood insurance. I can't get any help. Yet, they want me to pay this. I've received letters that say, you are no longer in a floodplain. You don't need to pay this. Now I receive letters, they want me to pay $4,900 a year for, garage does not exist, that was there a few years ago, is no longer existing. If I put a garage there, it's going to cost me $5,000 a year to have a garage. Forget it. What am I supposed to do? I mean, $4,900 a year for, you know, and a garage. I mean, there's this one lady who said she spent over $30,000. I've been in my place since 1999. I spent a heck of a lot more than that. And if I need it, like she said, it covers absolutely nothing. The furnace, the hot water, the AC, the whole nine yards, it covers absolutely nothing. Why are we, why can't something be done? I spent over 60 grand to get this house out of the floodplain. And it's absolutely worthless. Once you get in it, it's like, they won't let you get out. And I need to do something. Because like I said, you can sit here, you know, get in the garage. And they want to pay $4,900 a year flood insurance. So now I have to fight it.
All right, thank you. Well, if, well, first of all, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yeah, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Hendrickson, and I live at 4805 James Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'd like to thank Jane and you for your comments because I, too, stand here feeling very handcuffed and understand that this is a huge mountain to climb and don't know how to tackle FEMA. We just built a new home on that corner lot, the very back corner of our lot. Very, very back corner of the lot we're built, we're a rambler, that's a walkout rambler, so we're built into a hill. We couldn't add on to the back of our home due to, we used the existing foundation. It had the new foundation, anything new had to be two feet over the floodplain. And so we went out the front of the house, but that had to be two feet over. So the existing foundation, we added what would have been 2,000 square feet. We only get to use 1,000 of the square feet up on top because you have to step up two feet. And so now we have a large storage room because the back corner of our property is in the floodplain. And I would like to see any research on any flood in that home since it's been built or in the area since, you know, I think it's absolute ridiculous and somebody's got to tackle, I don't know who, how, feeling very handcuffed.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? If there are no other speakers, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have, we have two items before us. That is the map amendment and text amendment. Are there any further questions? Or would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Vreeland is moving approval, staff recommendation of items A and B, the map and text amendment. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I will add, and certainly I understand a lot of the frustration and anger associated with having a property that either has been in the floodplain all along or is identified in the new maps as being located in a floodplain. As we said before, you can certainly contact Mr. Verkota about the process of amending that map if it's possible. If, as he mentioned, the surveys that FEMA does look at, you know, rough elevations. But they're obviously surveying the entire country. So there may be instances where more refined information would show something else. But aside from that, clearly, we at the city don't have the ability to make changes to the map, and certainly not in this setting. And the zoning regulations that we're asked to adopt are also largely established by FEMA and by the DNR and the state of Minnesota. So we don't have a lot of discretion over that. So I just wanted to emphasize that and certainly mention that we understand some of that frustration. Commissioner Vreeland.
Yes. Fortunately, not passing this doesn't make any of these issues better. So we, as the planning commission, have very little choice that would assist any of the folks that are speaking here. But we can certainly send to our colleagues in the city council, certainly capture the conversation here today and ask the city council to work with the rules of FEMA and to at least have a discussion about ways that folks can contact FEMA. So it's, we do, the city of Minneapolis does have some ability to work with the federal government in a way that we as a planning commission doesn't. And I would certainly look to Commissioner Bender for any suggestions as the appropriate way to do that. But I don't want to pass this and leave this this evening without, and I don't know if these folks will be able to speak at the city council, but I would certainly like to include the frustrations and challenges of how these, how the FEMA rules don't work well for many folks and what those issues are.
Thank you. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had, even before that comment, wanted to ask staff to just clarify the next steps in this process and just so we understand, so the folks who came tonight know what the next steps are and what are the decision points and then what discretion, you know, does the city council have? For example, which would be the next step? Or what recourse people have if they don't agree?
Sure, Commissioner Bender. So the next step after this would be the zoning and planning committee of the city council. That is slated for October 27th. And ultimately, to the city council as a whole on November 4th, which is the date that the new map's going to affect. As I mentioned earlier, ultimately, we're, in order to continue participating in the NFIP, we have to adopt the maps as they're presented to us. Those property by property, you know, fine level changes are handled through FEMA through the letter of map amendment process.
All right. Are there any further questions or any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve items A and B. Clerk, please call a roll.
Vreeland.
Aye.
Swayze.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Gagnon.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item nine and also concludes our meeting for today. We have committee of the whole this Thursday at 4:30. Executive committee before that at 3:30. And our meeting is adjourned.